Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for October 23rd, 2023. And if you'll please join me for a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristin, will you do the roll call?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Paray.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good. The minutes, if anybody has any changes or corrections, so indicate. Seeing no requests, they will stand approved as presented. Ms. Simpson, will you please do our recognition tonight?
Absolutely. So it is my extreme honor to get to do the recognition and celebration of Community Week here in Arvada. Celebrating Community Week, it is an annual collaborative initiative from the service organizations Kiwanis International, Lions International, Optimist International, and Rotary International, took place of the week of September 11th through 17th, 2023. To celebrate Community Week, local members of these clubs were encouraged to work together on collaborative service projects and showcase the value of service in our communities. On September 16th, 2023, 29 volunteers from five service clubs observed Celebrate Community Week by volunteering to clean up several miles of Arvada's streets. The service clubs that participated in the cleanup effort were the following: Arvada-Jefferson Kiwanis, Arvada Lions, Arvada Sunrise Rotary, Arvada Lake Arbor Optimists, and Purpose Driven Optimists. The volunteers picked up litter from all along the following streets: West 72nd Avenue between Kipling Street and Carr, West 64th Avenue, and West 80th Avenue between Wadsworth Bypass and Kipling Street. City Council will present a certificate of recognition to each of the five clubs for their service to the Arvada community. At this time, I'd like to invite up a representative from each of the clubs to please join us if anybody would like to say anything. Come on. And I'll give you guys a chance to talk, but I just wanted to share that I personally requested this recognition because I am a proud Arvada-Jefferson Kiwani, and I participated. I was one of the 29 volunteers out there, and they gave me the ditch along Eldridge. Yeah, so I was out there in the muck doing and getting things out of the slush and slime, but it was actually a lot of fun. And then after everyone went out for a late breakfast, early lunch, and just sat around and talked and had the best time, which is what community is all about. You guys represent amongst the very best Arvada has to offer. These are jobs that are hard. These are jobs that people, trust me, nobody wants to get into that ditch. But we do it because we love our city and because it's important. And so whichever club you're a part of, that is important. So thank you for your service to Arvada. Thank you for your service to one another, and thank you for your service to yourselves because this is truly rewarding. All right. Turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councillors, it's good evening, and thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here. This project being recognized this evening was the result of a chance meeting between an optimist and a rotarian. No, they weren't walking into a bar.
Sounds like a joke.
They weren't walking into a bar, but they were at the Arvada Chamber Taste of Arvada. And the discussion was about Celebrate Community Week, which had just that day earlier been declared such by the clubs or the organizations that councillor just named. Sixty-five days later, with the extraordinary support and cooperation of your city manager Lori Gillis and her team, almost 30 members of five different Arvada service clubs spent Saturday morning cleaning up three segments of Arvada's streets. It still amazes me that this was conceived, planned, and executed in just over two months. The service clubs represented here this evening ranged from eight, eight to 90 members. The oldest one was formed in 1946. The youngest one, which I'm part of, is only 32 years old. Other than pick up trash, what else do these clubs do? Here are a few of the things. Tens of thousands of dollars of scholarships are awarded to students of Arvada schools. Each year, 200 bicycles are collected, refurbished, and distributed to area schoolchildren. Thousands of eyeglasses are collected, repurposed, or recycled, keeping them out of landfills. Multiple clubs collect plastic film, keeping 2,500 pounds of it out of landfills, and then placing benches around the community. These clubs support numerous organizations with which I'm sure you're familiar: Community Table, CASA, Ralston House, ARSE, Habitat for Humanity, Hope House, Majestic View Nature Center, Santa House, Jeffco Recovery House, and many others. Club members, these 150-plus club members, do not do what they do for recognition. They have a heart for service, and when they see a need, they respond with a solution. You will continue to see these people serving the people of the city of Arvada. So if you encounter a need that isn't being addressed, you know where to go. Mr. Mayor, as you began your last three weeks as mayor, I thank you, not only for your service to the city, but also representing Arvada at Metro Mayor's Caucus, Carter Municipal League, and I'm sure others. When you finish your term, you will not have to decide which Arvada service club to join because you'll have time to join all of them. Best wishes to you and you Luann.
Lake Arbor Optimists, yeah, there we go, Arvada Lions, and Purpose Driven Optimists. Get a photo.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you to all the members of the service clubs. You are part of the fabric of what makes Arvada so very special. So thank you all for what you do. I have no sign-up sheets for anybody that wants to make public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to, please so indicate, and I'll call on you. Mr. Litzu.
If I can change hats quickly. I know you've all received invitations to the ARSE Get It Done Breakfast on November 9th. Just a reminder, we'd love to have you come. I know some of you have conflicts, but as long as I was here, I thought I'd invite you again. Thanks.
Good job. And we have nobody on Zoom, Kristin? Very good. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have some items. The first is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order and authorizing the city manager to sign a quote in an amount not to exceed approximately $708,000 to the statewide Internet Portal Authority for the purchase of Google Workplace product licenses. Next is a resolution approving a contract to buy and sell real estate between the city of Arvada and 4,600 West 60th Avenue LLC located at 4,600 West 60th Avenue, Arvada, Colorado. And the third and final consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing change order number three to an agreement buying between the city of Arvada and Hammond Infrastructure, Inc. for construction of 18ST40, Ralston Road, Yukon Street to Garrison Street, in an amount not to exceed $3,577,701.82 for a revised total contract amount not to exceed $16,284,467.63. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the consent agenda items are 23-095, 23-099, and 23-100 all be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda? That passes seven to zero. Thank you. We have three resolutions tonight. The first is R23096, a resolution accepting submission of the Arvada Police Department Facial Recognition Accountability Report in accordance with CRS 2418-302, paragraph four. And Aaron Jacks is going to be presenting this tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
As you may be aware or recall, recent state legislation now requires that law enforcement agencies in Colorado who wish to implement or continue their use of facial recognition services as an investigative tool must comply with certain statutory requirements. One of those is that the police department was required to file a notice of intent to resume its use of facial recognition, which council did at its meeting, or council accepted that notice of intent at its meeting on March 6th of this year. The APD has continued with its preparations to re-implement the use of facial recognition technology. It has prepared the accountability report required by statute, and the APD held public meetings at community stations to receive any feedback from community members. The APD is now submitting its final accountability report to council in order to meet the requirements of CRS 2418-302 subsection four. The city team is recommending that council approve R23096, a resolution accepting submission of the Arvada Police Department Facial Recognition Accountability Report in accordance with CRS 2418-302 subdivision four. Would note, Your Honor, that Deputy Chief Hendershaw and Brandy Kristin from Arvada PD Crime Analysis are here for any questions.
Very good. Open it up for city council. Questions or action? Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. Your Honor, I'll move that R23-096, a resolution accepting submission of the Arvada Police Department Facial Recognition Accountability Report in accordance with CRS 24-18-302, paragraph four, be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 23097, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County R1 School District and the city of Arvada on behalf of the Arvada Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program. And again, I'll call upon Aaron Jacks to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Arvada Police Department assigns School Resource Officers, or SROs, to Jefferson County R1 high schools and middle schools in the city under the terms of a memorandum of understanding that was dated in July of 2016. This intergovernmental agreement updates various terms and incorporates changes in applicable law since the date of that 2016 MOU, and this SRO IGA will supersede that existing agreement in its entirety. The Arvada team is recommending that city council approve Resolution 23-097, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County R1 School District and the city of Arvada on behalf of the Arvada Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Very good. Mr. Mormon, you're first.
I would like to make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Jones, do you have a question? No. Just fighting for the motion. No fight. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that R23-097, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County R1 School District and the city of Arvada on behalf of the Arvada Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Our final resolution tonight is R23098, a resolution by the city council for the city of Arvada, Colorado, to approve the Old Town Arvada Strategic Reinvestment Plan, and Patty McCartney, local range senior planner, will be making this presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. In response to semi-permanent street closures in Old Town, the city team engaged Dig Studios to develop the plan and evaluate the long-term strategic reinvestment in Old Town. Over the past 16 months, Dig Studios has led an extensive community engagement and planning process to develop the Old Town Arvada Strategic Reinvestment Plan, presented tonight for your consideration of approval. I would now like to introduce Ryan Soto-Rakis from Dig Studios, who will present the final plan.
Good evening, everyone. Hello again.
Nice to see you again.
So I want to give an overview of the final Old Town reinvestment plan. Some of this will be a recap. I'll go through that pretty quickly, and then there's a few additional final items since we last spoke. But first of all, I'd really like to extend a huge thank you to the city, to council, to city staff, the Old Town Business Improvement District, our technical advisor committee, and of course, the Arvada community for really coming out and supporting this effort and providing their input and feedback. And this is really the community's plan. So as well as the other members of our consultant team, who aren't with us tonight, but Studio Seed, Wilson &amp; Company, and Thrive Planning as well. So you're pretty familiar probably with the project schedule, but we kicked off last May of 2022, had a lot of data collection and community engagement throughout the summer, and then again with draft concepts this past winter. And then we were here in front of council in early May, finalized the plan, and then we're here tonight, which says September, but it's October now, but it's kind of culmination of 16, 17 months of work. So in terms of the community engagement, you know, we started last summer with Arvada on tap, second Saturday. We had our first public open house in the fall. We had great turnout of this, as well as the second public open house, over 100-plus attendees, both at local businesses in Old Town. And then we also attended the St. Patrick's Day Festival in March as well. And I do want to also mention, so there was, since we were here last, there was a 30-day public comment period for the draft plan. Those comments closed, that comment period closed September 15th. All of those comments, we had about 40 comments on the plan, have been incorporated, addressed where possible. And in addition, there were over 1,200 emails sent out to various entities, the bid, the Technical Advisory Committee, RTD, the Historical Society, and the Chamber of Commerce as well, for soliciting input on the draft plan since we last spoke. So I'll go through this recap pretty quickly. You should be familiar with this, but the overall vision that came out of this plan was that Old Town Arvada is a distinct historic downtown that's walkable, safe, green, and well-connected to the broader region. The unique character of Old Town is celebrated, and a high-quality network of public spaces created a community that is inviting to all and will thrive into the future. The four pillars of this plan that came out of our early community engagement, and a lot of these were words that we heard repeatedly, that rose to the top in terms of what people love about Old Town or what they want to ensure is maintained in Old Town. So that Old Town stays vibrant with flexible and active public spaces, activated streetscapes, and really building upon the popularity of the food and beverage businesses that are already, have already created a destination in Old Town. That Old Town remained a very distinct place with incentives to activate architectural assets that are there, to create incentives for reinvestment and quality development, and as well as embracing the power of that historic district that really has a wonderful, unique sense of place to it. That Old Town is well-connected to the broader city and to nearby amenities, to expand the pedestrian-only experience that was so well-loved for the past couple of years, and also create a really great sense of arrival into Old Town. And the last pillar is that Old Town be resilient with a consistent and healthy tree canopy, opportunities for green infrastructure in the future as public spaces are reimagined, to always encourage walking, biking, and transit use, and to certainly ensure efficient operations and maintenance of the public realm in Old Town. So what came out of this plan in terms of recommendations, you know, the big piece of this was certainly the sort of concepts for Old Wadsworth and Grandview Avenue. But we also looked at how the streets throughout Old Town would function. There are two alternatives in this plan that I'll hit on in a second, but basically there you'll see two alternatives for Grandview. There was some discussion about whether that is fully pedestrian or allows limited one-way vehicle traffic. So these diagrams illustrate the sort of hierarchy of how the streets would function and the levels of improvement. So A blocks being sort of this curbless, always pedestrian-only, you know, except in the case of emergency access, which would be the two southern blocks of Old Wadsworth, as well as possibly Grandview from Old Wadsworth to Webster. B would be these other cases where they're sort of sometimes pedestrian-only. They can be closed for special events, but the curb is maintained, but the high-quality paving materials and all that extend throughout the street, and they really feel like the same overall experience. That's the northernmost block of Old Wadsworth and Grandview from Webster to Uppam. And then C and D are sort of lower levels of streetscape improvements, but bringing the same materiality, paving, street furnishings into those streetscapes as well, just in a slightly more limited basis. How this affects vehicular access, sort of basically how it is working now, right? So Old Wadsworth would remain closed to vehicles from Grandview to Grant. And then Grandview from Old Wadsworth to Webster is sort of a TBD for future study. Otherwise, there's a planned roundabout at 55th and Old Wadsworth to help with some access to the hub parking garage, as well as some recommendations in the plan, document that you'll see for some improved intersection control and function at 56th and Vance to allow for better vehicle access to the hub on the east side. Circulation loading, so an important piece of this is to ensure that bicycle routes are connected through Old Town, both north, south, and east-west, but also to minimize conflicts with the future fully pedestrian zone on Old Wadsworth, to implement a dismount zone on that when that is rebuilt, and route bicycles down Webster to the station. That there is always bicycle parking at corners, that there's also ADA parking always in the closest on-street parking spaces to intersections, consolidated delivery and loading zones in the alleys and potentially on Grandview, as you'll see in one option, and then maintaining that RTD kiss-and-ride on Grandview as well. So the pretty pictures. So the final concept for Old Wadsworth, again, this curbless configuration, linear, think of it as a linear pedestrian plaza, about a 12-foot zone for outdoor dining and cafes on either side, about eight-feet zone of planting, seeding elements that would vary sort of throughout, some raised at, you know, bench height, some lower to the ground, and then the clear zone of 20 to 36 feet for emergency access down the center. So for Grandview, as I've mentioned, two alternatives were included in the plan, and you might remember from when I was here in May, that there had been some discussion back and forth with some various support on both sides of whether Grandview remain fully closed like Old Wadsworth with the exception of emergency access, or if it is reopened on a limited basis to one-way vehicle traffic. So that's an alternative one here is that it's sort of the same as Old Wadsworth. It's as closed to private vehicles as now. Some of the pros of that is you get this fully pedestrian zone, unobstructed access and flow between the station and the north side of the street. You get a more equally balanced outdoor dining option and area on both sides of the street, additional planting area on the south side. Again, that consistent design and flow with Old Wadsworth, an opportunity for more programming and play elements within that street space. Some of the cons that we did hear, though, from some of the emergency groups, fire, and police, is that it is a little bit difficult to get to the station plaza as needed. It does force vehicle traffic to some of these other streets, and it would, at least in the interim, require some accommodation for the bank drive-through that is currently there, just same as sort of what's out there right now. Option two would reintroduce one-way vehicular traffic with a curb eastbound. Eastbound, the reason for this is to improve, potentially improve circulation and access to that east-side parking garage access at the hub at 56th and Vance because of the challenges with access to the garage from Old Wadsworth. If you're heading south, right, you can't turn left into the garage. So we heard through various conversations with the community that, and from statistics, that the hub is very underutilized, and partly because it's confusing for people to sort of get in and out of it. So with hopefully some improvements, working with RTD in the future at 56th and Vance, and some consolidation potentially for cars to enter at that intersection and not have to wind through the movie theater parking lot, allowing one-way traffic on Grandview for traffic coming from the north and the west will sort of help with that. It also creates some additional parallel parking spaces, additional ADA parking spaces for the businesses on Grandview, easier emergency access, and allows for this additional sort of double row of trees and planting on the north side. But the con to this is it, the south side of the street would not have as much space for outdoor dining, and it does, of course, introduce the presence of cars. So these are things that'll need to be studied in the future when there's a full, you know, design process for this. But because there was a lot of conversation and support for both, the staff and consultant team felt it best to include both options in this plan pending for future study.
Ms. Simpson's got a question at this point.
Yes, so I apologize. I'm genuinely struggling to sort of envision how the eastbound traffic here assists with entry into the garage because you can't, so if you're coming from the north side and you're on that west side of the garage, you can't turn left from Old Wadsworth to get into the garage. You have to go U-turn. So we would be changing that?
No. So this is to improve access to the east-side entrance to the garage that's at 56th and Vance. So sort of by the new multifamily community and hotel.
Ah, I get it.
There are recommendations in here to improve that intersection, to make it more intuitive, particularly for drivers coming off of Wadsworth Bypass.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, because I'm one of the drivers who comes from Wadsworth to get in there. So I highly, highly agree. We need to improve entrance into that, particularly with all the development going on right there with the new apartments and the new Marriott going in. But in addition, with this eastbound, sorry, I actually almost think it would make more sense to make it be westbound traffic and just to create a left turn into the parking garage. That would make far more sense to me because we're going to have people cutting around either way, and that entrance on the east side is already difficult. We just need an entrance to it from the west side that's not coming from the south.
Sure. There are some technical challenges to that because of the proximity of the railroad crossing, and that is why there's, that does not allow a left turn there currently. It's not potentially completely out of the question, but it would be someone who has more expertise than myself on whether that's possible.
Well, and that's why the discussion of the roundabout on Old Wadsworth, south of that entrance.
Correct. So that southbound traffic can go down to 55th, go around the roundabout, come back up north, and then turn into the garage.
And I don't think I'm talking out of school that Urban Renewals willing to commit some dollars to that, so.
Wonderful. I think that might be a much better solution than keeping this pedestrian. So thank you.
Thank you. Also, there's concepts in here, or a concept for Old Town Square as well. I believe you have seen this previously. In the future, envisioned to have a much larger splash pad. We did hear loud and clear that the splash pad is a very beloved feature. So this future concept would expand that, make it larger, closer to Old Wadsworth, as well as a larger civic green and a pavilion structure that could include, you know, storage, skate rentals, if there's potentially an ice rink in the winter, space for community events, concerts. And then that north side, through this double row of trees you see there, is intended to sort of be this extended event space where you can have plenty of room for tents for farmers market and community festivals. The other piece of this was surveying the community on potential materials and furnishings and lightings, lighting elements. So these are not specific products at this stage. It's an overall aesthetic.
Mr. Jones, do you have any comments about what kind of lighting you'd like to see?
No, I just want to make sure that the recycle cans are in it is.
I had to.
But something about Festoon lighting?
Well, yes, it needs to be, can I get my wife? Can I phone a friend?
Yeah, sure. We know that that was a very popular idea. It's illustrated in the plan as well for overhead lighting. On Old Wadsworth, it's not possible to do it on Grandview because of the proximity to RTD's platforms. But, and also, you know, there's also not buildings on most of the south side of the street, or so. on most of the south side of the street or so. But overall preference was for, you know, warmer brick paving that complements the historic architecture, a lot of bringing in the introduction of wood into the furniture so it's not metal that's getting super hot in the sun, but a sort of modern but timeless, classic aesthetic.
Mr. Mormon?
I do have to jump in on the picture about the recycling bin. So, I noticed in the alley improvement models that you had shared in your report, and I don't know if you're going to go into detail in that in the presentation at all, but all three cities, Longmont, Clotter Springs, and Glenwood Springs, one of the common elements all have something to do with consolidated waste services being provided, either coordinated through the city or through the businesses, I would assume. So, I think that's, it's interesting to me that all three have that element and it's something that we are struggling with. We're trying to figure out with our bid, I know, but I hope that we can learn from those three cities and what they've done to help improve the situation here.
Absolutely, that is the number-one biggest key to alley improvements is figuring out how to consolidate trash on a, you know, block basis where all of the businesses share a trash service.
And recycling.
And recycling, yes. So, the last part of this is the implementation plan. So, how does this all shake out? So, as you'll see in the full plan document, there's a long list of targeted recommendations that fall under each of those four larger pillars in the vision for Old Town. And then, implementation plan identifies short-term, meaning 2024 through '26, medium-term, '27 through 2030, and then others that are sort of ongoing. So, and I run through this list real quick in terms of short-term, but implement the entertainment district, which I believe may already have happened or is very close, improving access and wayfinding to the hub parking garage, creating a mobility hub at the RTD Plaza for micro-mobility, scooters, bicycles, things of that, potentially pickup drop-off for ride shares, designing and creating design guidelines for this pedestrian priority zone of Grand View and Old Wadsworth, installing some of the streetscape upgrades to the C and D block streets, creating that 100% design for Old Town Square. You'll see alley upgrades in here, so starting a program to consolidate the waste and recycling and grease trap areas is sort of step one, that's phase one of this. Improving the bike connections north to Ralston Creek, creating a wayfinding and district branding signage, identity plan, invest in some year-round programming of the RTD Plaza, and then also planning and designing additional bike facilities through Old Town. In the medium-term, building out that pedestrian priority zone of Old Wadsworth and Grand View, as well as Old Town Square, finish upgrading the rest of the streetscapes in Old Town, look for an opportunity to add an additional pedestrian crossing of Ralston Road between Wadsworth and Old Wadsworth. It's shown in the diagram as potentially advanced, but, you know, that would just requires future study with traffic engineering, additional gateways and intersection improvements, continuing the bike connections, and then phase two of the alley upgrades, which would be more of the resurfacing cleanliness, sort of surface-level recommendations. So, and then ongoing is marketing, special events, continue, build upon the success that's already there, redeveloping some of those key historic assets, encouraging a street tree and native planting program in Old Town, look for opportunities for green infrastructure, and then ensuring long-term maintenance and operations are in good shape. So, with that, I'd love to answer any questions.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. The one thing, though, that I still see missing, and maybe I should first ask, so I have an understanding from the Arvada team, what are the next steps after this plan is approved and what's that timeline?
We're currently preparing, going through, and doing preliminary concept designs to share with all of our, with our team so then in order to help assist with moving forward with potential funding. So, we're trying to identify that and we'll continue. I think funding is the limitation in implementing most of this plan, but however, we'll continue to have those conversations with our partners in order to help implement it.
Okay, that's very helpful. So, I think that the piece that I feel that's missing, and I've mentioned this before, but accessibility for individuals that aren't able to walk down our pedestrian mall. And, you know, I've gotten a number of constituents that tell me they don't go to Old Town anymore because they cannot access those businesses and restaurants. So, I really, I would like to see this amended to include something about how we're going to increase that access on the pedestrian mall. And you mentioned funding is the next step, so I would hope that, you know, we have a shuttle bus that sits and is not, is not being used. And maybe that's not the right mode, maybe it's golf carts, maybe it's something that's smaller that we can do, but we've got to, we've got to find the funding to make that work. And so, I would ask that that get prioritized with this list. And I would like that assurance before I put my approval on this tonight.
We can add that to our strategic plan and outline for the implementation.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fiver?
So, for Grand View, you listed two options. But I was the only one that actually was okay with the one way on there and everyone else was not for it, so I don't know why you would list it six to one. So, I would remove it. I think council, unless council feels different now, but as I recall that, that second option for the driving was not something that council supported.
Okay.
At that meeting. I'm looking to council.
I guess I'm looking, they've also gotten input from other people beyond council, so it should still be subject to further discussion.
Well, let me ask you, did you get more feedback after council gave you feedback? Because we should probably be the last to be presented to.
We received repeated feedback from members of the technical advisory committee, again, emergency services, transportation, traffic engineering, that did prefer the ability to have that, that block opened for easier access that wouldn't require, you know, there'd be emergency access in either condition, but that would require in a fully pedestrian condition that there are bollards that need to be removed or lowered or something that, you know, required, that's an obstruction that's there most of the time that they would need to open. So, this was from several members of the technical committee, as well as there was fairly equal support in the public for both through public comments.
Was this after you met with us in August? I think it was August when we met.
There were, there was support both ways through the 30-day public comment period, as well as at our final technical advisory committee, I believe, which would have been since I was here last, yes.
Yeah, I mean, the argument can be made for Old Wadsworth too, just so we're clear. I mean, we talk about lack of north and southbound traffic. So, I just think that, I just feel that the council already had a vision for the area and we need to probably stay the course. Even though I was okay with either, I was just happy we're just frigging closing the streets. Just, that's my excitement. I just want to make sure that if we're approving a plan, that the plan has clear vision, not alternatives that will just get altered or changed at a later time. So, I would advocate that, that alternative get removed and stick with what council already heard back in August and agreed to.
Which was full closure.
Full closure, and yeah, because, I mean, it's been going that way for how many years now? And we're just hearing this now that we're going to do an investment? I think we would have heard this over the last three years if it was truly a problem. So, even though I was the minority of this argument, I would, I would now argue that we stay the course because six council members made a case that they wanted it this way. So.
I looked to staff.
I'm sure that's not a problem.
That is a change that we can make at your, as part of your approval.
So, just take that out of there.
Okay.
As part of our approval. And then, I would agree with Mr. Mormon around the accessibility. If we want to be an accessible community, we have to make sure that we think more broadly about accessibility, not just for the businesses, but in general. I do see that bus back there all the time and I'm like, oh, we should be using it. And I was trying to think of, you know, what's his name?
Tim Steinhaus.
Tim Steinhaus.
I'm sure we could get him to volunteer to keep.
He drove that little, little golf cart thing. I don't know what that thing was, but, you know, we just kind of need to think about how to connect the garage to the business district.
We hear you. I do want to be clear that the bus that you're referring to is not operable at this point in time.
The one back there?
Yeah. But I'm hearing what you're saying and understand the accessibility. The accessibility within the closed area is, of course, ADA and fully considered and planned for. As far as transporting from within the garage, I don't believe we have a plan for that right now, so noted.
Or just maybe kind of pepper it in there as something to vision for or maybe work with a bid on would be important. And then also, when businesses are improving, that they maybe make their entrances and so forth a little bit easier to get into. That's all I have, but great job. I'm glad to see this.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I actually wanted to reinforce for accessibility as well. I hear frequently, so our street closures have a 92% approval rating. That 8% is overwhelmingly going to be people with disability issues who feel like they can't go to Old Town anymore. They, they are adamant they will not use the garage. It's too far to walk for them. And the primary concern is not those in wheelchairs, rather, it's those who cannot walk a long distance. So, they can walk, but they struggle. And then that's where the primary problem is, is because they can't get to the businesses they want to see. So, that's the primary issue we need to be, probably be solving for. And then in addition, just better signage for the parking garage. It's amazing to me that I still have constituents that say, wait, there's a parking garage? Yes, it's that enormous thing right there.
Yeah.
And so, I think if we have just much more visible signage and as easy as possible, arrows this way, arrows this way, that would probably help alleviate and increase our utilization of the garage and alleviate the parking overflow on some of the streets and accessory parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. So, I want to agree with what Mr. Pfeifer said. My recollection was the same, and actually, I was kind of surprised to see this in the final plan of the sometimes, or the open and sometimes closed version of Grand View. My recollection was that we were, thought it would be appropriate to build it so traffic could go on it, but that the normal operation would be that it's closed. But on special occasions, it could be opened, as opposed to the normal operation being open and on special occasions, it could be closed. And so, I'd hate to see that in the plan and given the same status as what the majority of the plan, you know, was. I think it's okay if it's an alternative, but I, there should be some delineation between this is what council, you know, decided, this is also an alternative that could be revisited later or something like that, just, just so that as we go forward, there's not confusion that which of these is the favored plan because it was clear that the decision-making body, which is council, it was very clear which way they were, although I'll acknowledge others might have thought differently, but for that. And then, on the ADA piece, I think that, I would caution us a little bit that any new construction like this, of course, we've got to follow ADA guidelines, will be handicapped accessible, accessible. We cannot build stuff that's not. And I would be careful about putting specifics in a plan like running a shuttle bus or something like that when these are, you know, the overall concept of accessibility and friendly to people with, with difficulties with accessibility should be in there, but, but the specifics should not. You know, that, that wasn't part of the plan and that wasn't anything that was debated or sussed out or talked about and that the future is the time to do that when something's being constructed. That's when those details should be, should be added. And so, shooting from the hip today and adding things to the plan, to me, doesn't seem like probably the right answer here when we are constrained by the ADA law anyway. My two cents.
See no other questions, entertain a motion. Ms. Faray?
I actually did have a comment, so one more. Just that despite almost getting rocked in a roundabout this morning, I still support roundabouts and I think that this on Vance Street is going to be very helpful, just with the flow of traffic and maybe help with encouraging people to go into the garage. So, I'm glad to see that that came in. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Simpson?
I'll take the motion.
Please, please proceed.
I move that R23-098, a resolution to approve the Old Town Arvada Strategic Reinvestment Plan, be approved.
Motion's for approval?
There needs to be an amendment.
With the amendments previously stated by Councilmember Mormon and Councilmember Pfeifer.
Is that good enough? Okay.
Does that give you direction?
I'm assuming yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Although it's cast, that passes seven to zero. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Jones, I'm very disappointed that we don't have any ordinance on first reading tonight for your final city council business meeting.
I was willing and ready, but there's nothing coming, so that's okay.
Very good. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on the community comments on the application process for the Community Development Block Grant 2024 Annual Action Plan and 2024 Human Services Funding Pool. Do we have individuals that are signed up to speak on this tonight? Do we have anyone who would like to testify with regard to the community comments on the application process for the Community Development Block Grant 2024 Annual Action Plan and 2024 Human Services Funding Pool? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. This is our hearing where we can hear from potential applicants for those. And so, we need to take no further action on this tonight, correct? Very good. Do we have anybody that would like to address city council at this time? You have up to five minutes of time to speak. Seeing none, I'll close that. Reports from city council. Mr. Fiver?
I know there'll be a night where we can, you know, reflect on your time, Mayor and, and Mr. Jones, but it's a little bit more quaint in here right now, so it might be easier for me to share my thoughts. I just want to say I appreciate serving with all the councils over the 12 years I've been there and especially from you, Mayor. I mean, I learned a lot from you as what good governance is. And when you got that award, I, I meant it, you know. I took some of the way you governed us in city council to Dr. Cox, you know, not leading the witness, you know, as I always said, the mayor should be the last one or the chair should be the last person to speak. And hopefully, I've shown you that respect over the years. Never try to speak after you. But it's those little things, those etiquettes, that make us special as a council and, and it's remembering us at the tree lighting, right? And making sure all of councils recognize. And those little type of things that showed the respect amongst the councils over the years. So, you know, I just want to tell you, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your governance of the city through the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's been a ride and I'm sure if you reflected over your, what'd you say, three decades? Four decades you've been in?
Technically, four.
Four, you know, times change. I mean, the internet was just invented possibly by then. But if you reflect it, I'm sure you, you can see quite a journey. So, I just wanted to share some comments before we get in front of a bigger crowd that night when we do the swearing-in.
You're kind. Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor, and I will echo Councilmember Pfeifer's comments. While I've only spent two years on council with you, I really appreciated the different opportunities to work with you and our meetings with the city manager. And I, I think we've, over the two years, we've both gained some great respect for each other. So, I just wanted to express that and, and always your opportunity to, to make sure everyone's voice is heard, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Simpson?
Thank you. So, I'll start with David. David, it's been a really fun four years with you. You have a tremendous presence. You are calm, you are thoughtful, you are respectful, and you've never, I don't think in four years I've ever seen you lose your temper. So, I imagine I'd probably cry if you ever yelled at me because it's, you're David. So, I just want to say how much I've appreciated your, your partnership and your friendship and your mentorship all these years. We don't always agree on every issue, but I always know that you are good and honest and thoughtful in your opinions. And so, and I hope you've always felt the same way about me. And I have really, truly enjoyed working with you these four years. Oh, Mark, my goodness. I must say, I have truly appreciated your leadership of the council. You are, what, you operate a council that is one of the finest in the metro area and we are because of the strength of your leadership. You bring us together. Everyone has the opportunity to speak. Everyone has the opportunity to be heard with respect and no one has ever, is ever treated disrespectfully. And I have heard you raise your voice once in a while.
Yes.
But you do it when the situation is called for. Whenever somebody's out of line, you do it to bring others back into line, not to escalate, but to de-escalate. but to de-escalate. And so I want to thank you for all of that, for the mentorship, for the leadership, for the consideration. We will miss you, and win or lose, whoever fills your seats, those are going to be some very big shoes and some very shiny jackets to fill.
You're kind. Ms. Marriott?
Thank you. I guess I'll weigh in, too, and definitely, David, I want to say thank you for your time on council. For someone like you with the skills and abilities that you have to donate your time to your community is really something exceptional, and the skills you brought have been amazing. I, it's, it's a shame we're not going to continue seeing you here. You have been, have been terrific. And, Mr. Mayor, you know, you and I have been together on this council for a long time. I feel like I've made a great friend in addition to had a great mentor, and I think whoever wins is going to feel just like Brian Greasy did when they stepped into John Elway's cleats and tried to replace a legend. And I think that's what it's going to be here, and I look forward to whoever the council is going forward to maintaining the tradition that both of you two have set for all of us.
Ms. Faray?
Yeah, I guess I'll say something, too. David, the questions that you've asked are thought-provoking, and you bring an open mind to those questions and those situations. I think a lot of people come with just predisposed opinions, and you're open to having conversations, and they can be hard, but I always appreciate that you came with an honest and open mind. And I don't know if I changed your mind on anything, but I appreciate you listening. That was very helpful. And Mark, I remember when I started campaigning, and I was terrified to meet you. I thought you were going to grill me so hard and yell at me for having the wrong opinions, and you didn't. You respected the opinions that I had, and you encouraged me to learn, and I expanded my, my mind in different ways because of that openness. And I think you've really set the bar of how to be a leader in the community, and as someone that's brand new in this space, I really appreciate that mentorship. And I know that my partner Eli, as well, has learned from you in, in the Ora Board, and so thank you for guiding both of us and bringing us up to your level or hope to be your level.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeifer?
Sorry, David, I skipped right over you until I felt... No, but I just have really kind of three things that sum you up. You have empathy, you have civility, and you just respect, and that's the way I would sum you up. And seeing you the other day at the Jefferson Parkway, dealing with that, that's impressive, because I was boiling behind you, so he wouldn't look at me. So I won't be the chair, because that probably wouldn't be a good thing for the authority. But no, I, I think it really puts testament of who you are and your character, so just, you know, anything you touch has been successful, so.
You are very kind. This is... This is emotional. It's... I have, thank you, thank you. I have participated in over a thousand city council meetings between, you know, over 500 as a city council member and five, over 500 as, as mayor. I don't want the city clerk to go back and give me an exact count, but I know it's well over a thousand. And that doesn't include all the, you know, the Parkway meetings, the Ora meetings, the Dr. Cog, the CML, the Metro Mayor's Caucus. It's become, it's a huge part of my life, and it's, it's time, it's interesting, 12 years ago, my campaign sign was, "It's time." And once again, it's time. It's time for a new leader in this community, and I wish, and I want to comment that I appreciate, and when I, when Ms. Simpson told me that she was going to be running for mayor along with Mr. Marriott, I had fears that that could carry over into council chambers, into our five o'clock meetings, and it hasn't. And so I thank both of you for your professionalism, that you have, you know, campaigns are tough. Having been through six of them, emotions get high, and it, it can be very, it can be very difficult, but you two maintained a degree of professionalism, as you said you would, that I truly, truly appreciate. And, you know, obviously, Mr. Pfeifer, you're running again, and good luck to you. I hope, you know, I hope that we have as good a councils moving forward as I've been blessed to have during my 24 years here. I've served with incredible city council members and served under two excellent mayors in Bob Free and Ken Feldman, who I learned a lot from, and hopefully I've, and I appreciate the comments that I've given, some mentoring along the way, and I'll just ask you all to continue on that we can disagree, but as long as we disagree agreeably, Arvada's going to be okay. And to the city team, you're the best and always have been. Again, I've served with three city managers, Craig Koshen, Mark Devon, and now Lori Gillis, and you're all excellent. You're, you're the kind of leaders that we truly depend upon in our roles as council members, and the teams that you have assembled are, are second to none. And Ms. Morris, you've, you've followed in the footsteps of, of Chris Daly and have done an excellent job. You know, there'll be more opportunities for comments later on, but I am so grateful to the city team, to all the city councils I've, I've been fortunate enough to work with, and most of all, to the citizens of Arvada who, who were able to put aside my inadequacies and my crazy ways of dressing to, to elect me six times. And I'll have further comments with regard to family and, and the role that family plays in, in all of this when we get back together again. I urge everybody to vote. It's, you know, this is, this is the level of government that is closest to people, and, and we try to our darndest to keep it nonpartisan and to be able to respond to the issues of our citizens in a prompt fashion, much better than the state or federal level can do. So please, please fill out your ballot. I dropped off Luann's a mine tonight at the ballot box, and urge everybody to do so. And with that, Ms. Gillis, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Williams, Councilmember Jones, your colleagues said it well. You will be missed. You have left a legacy in many ways. And Councilmember Jones, I'll miss that smile and that look when you know, when I, when I know I need it, and it's there. So thank you for that. It's appreciated.
I, I couldn't say it better than everyone else already has, but one thing that I did want to point out, when I first started this job, it's a little different than what I had done before. I had never been a city attorney before, and whenever my friends and family asked me, what is it like to be the city attorney? The thing that I could always tell them was, I work for a group of people who really care about the community, and they care about the individuals that they serve. And Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Jones, you, you two have been at the very core of that, have really demonstrated that for me, and I think for everyone around you, and have been this fantastic example. Obviously, we'll talk more in November, but I, I just wanted to make sure that I made that comment and let you guys, both of you, know how much I appreciate that from you.
Well, after that love fest, we can stand adjourned.